Hello, I'm J. Jermaine Bay of the Lordy Moore's Premium, Ante Calvaro. The acronym is ANPAC and a chief judge of constable court. Today is Class 135, Class 135. What did we learn in Class 134? Well, we went over a lot, right? We went over some sensitive information, right? Regarding the notion that Moors nationality is Moors American. And we learned that Moors American, in all reality, is a compound adjective, right? And a compound adjective is not a noun. So how can a, how can Moors American be a nationality when it's not even a noun? We must also understand the word Moors American is not in the dictionaries. Why is the word Moors American not in any recognized dictionaries? It's because of that simple point that I stated in Class 134. You see, all the grand sheiks have always known that the word Moors American as a compound adjective could not be put in a dictionary because it would disclose the truth. That Moors American, according to the eight parts of speech, is an adjective. And the Moors Americans have been telling the black people that the word "black" is an adjective. So now we're finding out that when you see Moors Americans and the black communities such as the Nation of Islam or any of your other people who debate Moors Americans, when they're on the stage debating, all you got is the word "black" as an adjective and the word "Moors American" as adjective. You got two people claiming themselves as being adjective, two adjectives are fighting and going nowhere fast. Because "black" is not a nationality and "Moors American" is not a nationality. So they're both debating over things that you would call not well-settled principles. The word "Moors American" is not a well-settled principle in law. It can't be proven. And this is why the United States and several Union States keep trying to tell the Moors Americans that everything you're saying is a belief. You gotta stop blaming the United States. Don't get me wrong, they're 50% of the problem. But who's the other 50%? Us, as a people, we won't even take the time to look up words. Just like me, when I first got into movement, I thought I was a Moors American. Why is that? Because I was in followership. I was just trying to figure out, okay, we're Moors Americans, okay, sound good, what, okay, tell me more, let me learn, let me just listen, let me figure out where I can fit in and I can help. I just want to take things at face value, right? But once I got a little comfortable, I said, okay, this information isn't really lining up the way it should, right? Because X times Y equals Z, you should have a consistent formula when you're invoking a nationality. Where is the result? And then Moors Americans have been fighting over this, this word "Moors American" for over 100 years. That means you're not getting a result that you're looking for. But the consistent result that the Moors Americans kept getting was what? Adjudication. They kept going to jail, losing their houses, cars, children. That's the consistent result. So you have to understand that we as a people have to tell the truth. And the truth hurts sometime, but the truth will also set you free, right? So in Class 134, we have to examine the word "Moors American" more closely because your grand sheiks wasn't gonna do it for you. You see, there, there's no reason why a grand sheik would tell you about the word "Moors American" because right now the grand sheiks are making money off that word. The word "Moors American" has been commercialized. Moors American is a commercial industry. That's why everything's incorporated. Moore Science Temple incorporated. It's a corporation. Everything the Moors are doing is commercial-based. Think about it, all the Moors do is sell packages. That's commercial-based. Because if the Moors actually had a government, you would have to have an office that says you have to represent the people. You don't charge the citizens to do your job. So the Moors American movement turned into a commercial movement, right? And we have to talk about that. We have to talk about Barack H. Obama, how he's been trying to get the Moors' attention, right? He knew the Moors was watching him, so he goes to Cairo, Egypt, talks about the treaty, Treaty of Tripoli of 1796, Article 11. He started talking about how the Muslims are playing in the NFL. He said the Muslims lit the Olympic torch. Who, who, who lit the Olympic torch? Muhammad Ali. These are Moroccans. So we have to understand that their brother Barack H. Obama's been trying to point the way for a long time, right? And we have to pick up on the clues that he left behind. Now, there's something else I must address before I get into my class. It's very important, Moors. As of late, I've been recognizing that the black community and some of the Moors have been talking about this word "Indian." Now, I've addressed this before. It must be underscored that we are not Indians. The word "Indian" in itself is what in the eight parts of speech? An adjective. We have to learn, if you're gonna say you're Indian, now tell me the nationality. Because an adjective describes what? The noun. So you claim to be Indian, okay, now tell me the nationality. What tribe or reservation are you claiming? You saying you're Cherokee? Because you just can't say you Indian. Are you Cherokee? What is the nationality that you're claiming? The adjective describes the noun. So you got this foolishness going on. And now you got people such as Rod Hayes, right? Dane Callaway, now are trying to pull Moors into this whole Indian concept. You gotta see what's going on out here, the foolishness. Rod Hayes and Dane Callaway is trying to say everybody's Indians and they won't even take the time to tell you, first of all, Indian is an adjective. It's not a nationality, it's a generic word. Here's the next question you need to ask Rod Hayes and Dane Callaway. First of all, "Indian" is an adjective, correct? Okay, now tell me the noun that you're describing. So you say you're an Indian, what? Finish the sentence. You're Cherokee, what, what tribe or reservation is Dane Callaway and Rod Hayes claiming? Now, ask them to show you identification that that tribe or reservation recognizes Dane Callaway or Rod Hayes as being one of the nationals of said reservation or tribe. Ask Dane Callaway and Rod Hayes if they have renounced their citizenship of the United States. Are they claiming to be residents of the reservation? Because that, you have to have primary residence to live on the reservation. That's a part of the special agreements that the United States and all the Indian tribes have. The all Indians, primary residents, must be on the reservation. So these questions I'm asking are what you call rhetorical questions because Rod Hayes and Dane Callaway and all the birds out here, no matter what name they give themselves, these misnomers, you must understand this. They're gonna pull you back into what's called a subjugated status. You must understand, all Indian tribes come under the jurisdiction of the United States Civil and Criminal Courts. Soon as you call yourself an Indian and then you state the nationality next and you can prove that you got identification from said tribe or reservation that's recognized by the United States. Because you just can't create your own tribe and say, we got our own tribe and we're just doing our own sovereignty. It don't work like that. That's called what? Patently frivolous and arbitrarant capricious. So can Dane Callaway and Rod Hayes prove to you they have identification from a tribe or reservation that's recognized by the United States of America? They can't prove they got it. Have they renounced their citizenship of the United States? Can they prove that? No. And even if they do prove it, guess what they just proved to you? That they now come under the Civil and Criminal Jurisdiction of the United States. All over again, you done went from black to Indian because black is an adjective, Indian's an adjective, and black and Indian come under the jurisdiction of the United States. You ain't going nowhere fast. So you have to understand that we're being sold out by our own people. Rod Hayes and Dane Callaway ain't doing nothing but selling books, pamphlets, asking for donations. That's all they're doing, is making money off of you. You know what this is? It's called what? MLM, a multi-level marketing schemes. These people pulling on you. Let me ask you another question. Can Dane Callaway, right, and Rod Hayes show any of the Moors any treaty, any so-called Indian treaty, right? How many treaties do Indians have, right? Keep in mind, the word "Indian" is a generic word. I'm not even talking about the so-called name of the tribe. Some are gonna use this generic word as "Indian." Did you know that the United States signed over 370 treaties with the Indian tribes between the years 1778 to 1871? 370 treaties between 1778 and 1871. Show me any of those treaties. Show me one treaty out of 370 treaties where the Indians have civil and criminal jurisdiction over the United States of America. Show me any one of those treaties that recognizes that the Indian courts have jurisdiction over American citizens. Just show me just one out of 370 treaties, just one. Do me a favor, Dane Callaway, Rod Hayes, and all the birds. Show all the Moors just one treaty out of 370. Now, keep in mind, the United States has signed over 500 treaties since the year 1638 up until present. Over 500 treaties. But 370 of them were with the Indian tribes. And all the Indian tribes have recognized themselves as coming under the sovereign jurisdiction of the United States of America. So you run around here claiming you're Indian, first of all, you're just talking because you can't prove it. Tell me the nationality. And when you tell me nationality, now show me the tribal identification and show me that you renounced the jurisdiction of the United States, that you're no longer a citizen of the United States. Show me your primary residence is on the reservation, Dane Callaway and Rod Hayes. You must understand, not only can the Indians not prove through a treaty that they have civil and criminal jurisdiction over the United States of America, you can't even show that the Indians ever had went to the ICJ since 1945 to win a case against the United States of America. Show me one rare judicial case out of 370 treaties that the Indians have, the United States of America. Show me one case where any of those 370 treaties were used at the International Court of Justice. Why haven't Indians taken the United States of America to the ICJ? You know why they haven't? Because all of their treaties do what? They're what you call internal integrated treaties that recognize Indian tribes' reservations as coming under the jurisdiction of the United States of America. See, if you have what's called an internal state, that means you cannot be recognized as an external state. Only external states can utilize the provisions of the International Court of Justice. You see, Indian reservations and tribes are no different than saying "state of Alabama." They're equivalent. Reservations, Indian reservations, and the state of Alabama are equivalent. Why isn't it the state of Alabama has never taken Germany to the ICJ? Why hasn't Utah ever taken Mexico to the United States? Why haven't Texas ever taken the state of Mexico to the International Court of Justice? You know why? Because Texas is an internal state of the United States of America. It's not an external state. The Indian reservations are internal states. They are the possessions of the United States of America. No different in Alabama or Texas, all the Indian reservations got the same status. They are all internal states. And this is why they can't go to the ICJ. And this is what black people and Moors are talking about, they're Indians, all of a sudden. You don't realize, you'll never be able to use the International Court of Justice as a remedy to get your sovereign independence. Because you just agreed to subjugate your status as an Indian. You must understand what I'm saying right now. I'm talking law. And these, these, these people out here such as Dane Callaway and Rod Hayes, they're, they're not doing anything but fooling the people. Now, in comparison, right? Let's do a cross-comparison. The Moors treaties, Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1787, and the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, 1836, Articles 20 and 21, claims that Constable Court of the Moors have sovereign jurisdiction of both civil and criminal jurisdiction over the United States of America and over all American citizens. The Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 5, is a constable court article. So that one article, Article 5 of the Treaty of Madrid, is also a court that the United States of America comes under Constable Court. Then you go look at the Act of the Sarals of 1906. How many articles in the Act of the Sarals are that they talk about Constable Court? There's a minimum of 14 articles in the Act of the Sarals of 1906 that give the Moors, i.e. Moroccans, as a nationality, both civil and criminal jurisdiction over the United States of America and all their citizens. That's just four treaties I just mentioned, four treaties. But yet the Indians got 370 and not one of them claims that an Indian jurisdiction is over the United States of America. So all the thing I can do is warn, right? I'm warning all the black people, now I'm warning all the Moors. Don't fall for the shenanigans of Dane Callaway and Rod Hayes. Because they can't prove nothing they're saying because they themselves are not even recognizing any type of tribal reservation that the United States recognizes. You must understand, only the United States can recognize an Indian tribe. So we're gonna talk about that a little bit more today. We're talking nationality, I gotta keep it real. I gotta tell the Moors the truth. Keep in mind, ANPAC study session is what? An educational platform. So if Rod Hayes or Dane Callaway wanna challenge this information, I'd be more than happy to whip out all the reference points and absolutely crush them and embarrass them and expose them in front of the whole world. That way they cash out or come to an end. And that's why they won't challenge me, because they know I'll expose them. But guess what? I reach my arm out to them and tell them straight up, "Set it up!" Because we're about freeing people, let's tell the truth. Rod Hayes and Dane Callaway, while y'all selling books and asking for donations, challenge J. Bay. Because guess what? J. Bay don't play. And guess what? Nobody has to pay J. Bay for this information like y'all charging everybody. This type of stuff is gonna come to an end. That must be understood. Let's get to the class. So, as the Moors know, I always open up the Constitution. The Constitution is paramount. This is the only way to get access to international law, it's a port, right? It's a port. So anybody you hear talking about international law, ask them, "Where's your Constitution?" Has it been ratified, deposited, promulgated with the United Nations and according to Article 102? Because that's what Barack H. Obama was trying to get everybody to do when he talked about the, what? The Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples. As soon as you read the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People, right in the preamble, the first paragraph talked about what? The Charter. You go down to Article 1, Article 1, first thing it starts talking about what? The Charter. All your rights are guaranteed through the Charter. But also, we learned in the Charter, Article 73, Section E, as an echo, it said what? Constitution may be required. So where's Rod Hayes' Constitution that recognizes his state? Where's Dane Callaway's Constitution that recognizes their state and nationality? And has it been deposited with the United Nations and according to Article 102? Because that's what all civilized nations have to do. But they won't produce it. They're gonna just ask you for donations and cash out while you falling for that MLM, that multi-level marketing scheme they running on, y'all. That's the truth. All right, let's take it to the board. What are we talking about? Okay, today, all right, we're still talking about what? The Charter of the United Nations, right? Chapter 4, right? Chapter 4, Article 55 through 60, right? It's about what? We're talking about a new chapter. Listen. A new chapter, Chapter 4, Articles 55 through 60. It's about what? International economic and social cooperation. Why are we gonna talk about that today? Because the Moors love to talk about taxes! So taxes fall under what? Economics. About money, right? Moors like to talk about money, then let's talk about it. Guess what? The Charter talks about your rights. Your economic rights. We'll talk about that today. But we also been going over what? Chapter 11, Articles 73 through 74 is about what? The Declaration regarding non-self-governing territories, right? Currently, we've been talking about the ICJ, right? The chapter, what? 14, Articles 92, 92 through 96 is about what? The International Court of Justice. And right now, we've been going over what? International Court of Justice case of France versus the United States of America of 1952. And currently, what subsection are we talking about right now? We're talking about Moroccan treaties, laws, and regulations, right? That set up what? Moroccan taxes. We're gonna talk about Moroccan taxes, right? And the collections thereof. So about Moroccan taxes are binding on foreigners. Who are the foreigners? Who's technically the, the foreigner? That's on the treaties. United States of America, right? Anyone who was a signatory power to our treaties and anyone who's in the jurisdiction of the Empire of Morocco. So the Empire of Morocco is B state. That's the sole, S-O-L-E, the sole person in international law. So the sole person of the Empire of Morocco is owed taxes. And therefore, the Empire of Morocco puts together a central or decentralized government, three-personed government, that sets forth what next? Moroccan what? Law and Moroccan regulations that gives you the ability to go collect what? Moroccan taxes. You see, but only the sovereign can do that. You see? And all that's binding on foreigners. All right? So today, we'll keep talking about what? Moroccan taxes creates what? Economics and social development for Moors. So we're gonna talk about taxes, but we're gonna go back and read the Charter because the Charter talks about taxes as well under this word right here called what? Economic. Reforms for who? The state. The state is sovereign in international law. The state is a subject of international law. And then the state extends sovereignty to who? The government and the people. The republic is the people who vote for the people that sit in office. So you got the state, the government, and the people. And they all work as one, you see? And that creates what? An organized juror society. So we're talking about taxes, because I know the Moors love to talk about taxes. But you have to understand, when you talk taxes, you gotta talk what? Economics. Because the economics, the money, sets up what? Social reforms. Because you need money in order to maintain what? The society. Okay? We'll talk about that today. Let's continue. All right, so like I said, as the Moors know, we're talking about the Charter of the United Nations because Barack H. Obama tried to go, get us to go back and read the Charter of the United Nations, right? When he did his, when he signed the Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People in the year 2010. He signed it in 2010, thinking that the Moors would follow what he did and go back and read this and see this, all about the Charter, right? So right now, we're in Article 92 that talks about the ICJ. And since we're talking about the ICJ, we're talking about one of their cases, right? And one of their cases about what? France versus the United States of America. And within said case, we're learning how the judges ruled on the interpretations of the articles. You see? And now we're talking about taxes, because that was a part of this case. Does the United States owe taxes to the Empire of Morocco? Right? So what was the United States trying to break down? The United States said, "Well, the only, the only, the only taxes that the United States of America owes was only the taxes that were what? Disclosed in the treaties." But the ICJ turned around and said, "That's not true. You owe any taxes that the Moroccan government put together regarding their laws and regulations. The Moors can create any type of new revenues for the state." So the United States was like, "Well, the treaties mention specific, particular type of taxes for certain goods and services." So the United States was trying to say, "Let's keep it narrow, only about the language of the treaty and what it could tax." The ICJ said, "No, these Moors can create any type of laws and regulations that creates any type of new tax reforms." So the United States lost on the notion that the Moors can only tax them based upon the language of the treaties. And the ICJ, ICJ said, "No, you're thinking in the strict sense, the narrow sense, but the reality is a wider, broader understanding that the treaty also said that the Moors could create any type of laws and regulations to create new revenues for the state." All right? Okay, listen. All right, so in the case, right? This is pretty much where we left off, right? Because I was talking about Moroccan taxes, right? So we're on page what? 203 of the judgment, right? The judgment 203. It was about Moroccan legislation. You see how there's Moroccan legislation right there? You see how then we, we just started to transition, right? And it's talking about taxes. You see, watch what happens. Moroccan legislation, right? Moroccan legislation that's enforceable. Matter of fact, let's read, let's read that paragraph. Okay, no.
The second way in which the problem arises is in cases in which the cooperation of the Constable Courts is required in order to enforce the Moroccan legislation. In such cases, regardless of whether the application of the legislation would contravene treaty rights, the assent of the United States would be essential to its enforcement by the Constable Courts.
All right, so pause right there. So Moroccan legislation, right? Is enforceable by the Constable Courts. This is what the Moors have to understand. When the United States says, "Well, we don't owe those taxes. You, you guys made up some new tax, you wanna tax us for, for, you know, fishing in the lake." Well, yeah, we can do that. They said, "Well, that's not what the treaty said." Well, guess what? Moors get to create what? New revenues through their laws and regulations. And if the United States don't like it, guess what? Take your dispute to the Constable Court. This is what they're telling the United States. All right? Okay, so going down, listen, we'll come back to stuff like that, come, just a second. So right now, we're in subsection what? Now we're talking about tax, right? So ICJ has already given you an answer to the test. You got a problem, the United States? Take them to Constable Court. If you can't get it enforceable through Constable Court, where do you take them next? To the ICJ. You see? ICJ can't get the United States to enforce the rights of Constable Court. Where you take them next? The United Nations, right? General Assembly, Security Council, let them deal with it. And after that, you go where? ICC, International Criminal Court. Right? But you support us is outlawed in international law. So the Moors gotta master their pen and not their pistol. You understand what I'm saying? This is the weakest area of the Moors, right here, the pen. This is why Moors keep picking up arms, because you haven't studied, you know your pen is weak. Now, I'm trying to show you how to strengthen your erudition on how to use your pen in the right way. You'll stop picking up them arms when you realize your pen is mightier than a sword, right? Okay, so, we had started reading pages... Okay, so, we had started reading page two oh three, we got down to this paragraph, right? We finished reading it, however, anytime you read a judgment from the court, you should always start off with the summary, right? Because we went over the summary, remember that? But sometimes, it's good to read the overview as well. So you got the overview, which is a brief, then you immediately go read the summary. Never read the judgment before you read the summary on a case, alright? It's a one-two punch. Read the summary, then the case. But you can read the summary and also the overview of the case. So what do we have up here? From the International Court of Justice, alright, uh, um, Brother Dre.
Rights of Nationals of the United States of America in Morocco. France versus the United States of America. Overview of the case.
Pause. Okay, so where do you find that at? On the ICJ website, right? So on the ICJ website, you go over here to the far right, and you'll see all these different tabs you can click on. Right now, what are we looking at? Overview of the case. Where you click on all these and read more about the background history on the case, right? So it's got what? It's got, it's got the overview, and down here, it says what? Judgment that we're reading, but we also read what? The summary. So you click on either one of those, okay? Reference points. So let's read the overview, right? Because we're doing what? What are we gonna do now? We're kind of reading it backwards. We're looking at, okay, what was this about and what was the result? What was it about? What was the result? Okay, uh, Brother Dre from the top.
By decree of thirty, December nineteen forty-eight, the French authorities in the Moroccan protectorate imposed a system of license control in respect of imports not involving an official allocation of currency and limited these imports to a number of products indispensable to the Moroccan economy. The United States maintained that this measure affected its rights under treaties with Morocco and contended that, in accordance with these treaties and with the General Act of Al-Jusseris of nineteen oh six, no Moroccan law or regulation could be applied to its nationals in Morocco without its previous consent. In his judgment of twenty-seven August nineteen fifty-two, the court held that the import controls were contrary to the treaty between the United States and Morocco of eighteen thirty-six and the General Act of Al-Jusseris since they involved discrimination in favor of France against the United States. The court then considered the extent of the consular jurisdiction of the United States in Morocco and held that the United States was entitled to exercise ju- such jurisdiction in the French zone in all disputes, civil or criminal, between the United States citizens or persons protected by the United States. It was also entitled to exercise such jurisdiction to the extent required by the relevant provisions of the General Act of Al-Jusseris. The court rejected the contention of the United States that its consular jurisdiction included cases in which only the defendant was a citizen or protege of the United States. It also rejected the claim by the United States that the application to United States citizens of laws and regulations in the French zone of Morocco required the prior ascent of the United States government. Such ascent was required only insofar as the intervention of the Consular Courts of the United States was necessary for the effective enforcement of such laws and regulations with respect to the United States citizens. The court rejected a counterclaim by the United States that its nationals in Morocco were entitled to immunity from taxation. It also dealt with the question of the value of imports by the Moroccan Customs Authorities.
Alright, thank you. So, i- i- in the overview, it gives you a snapshot. What, what were they arguing about? What was the conclusion? Right? How was it settled? And as you can see towards the end of this reading, it said, the United States is not immune from the taxation, right? They still owe Moroccan taxes, alright? But what else did we learn in here? Let's go to the top. That's about what? Moroccan what? Moroccan economy. See that? Taxes is a part of the Moroccan economy, alright? So as the Moors start understanding who they are, and the Moors ask themselves, how are we gonna maintain our communities? It comes from what? The Moroccan economy. And Moroccan economy is about what? Collecting taxes, right? So this last sentence down here on my board, it said, Moroccan taxes creates e- economic and social development for Moors. You see how the ICJ is already putting out? Economy. Moroccan economy, not Moors-American economy. Moroccan economy. This is ICJ talking to you. You understand what's happening here? Alright, listen. That's the overview, right? Go back and read it, okay? It's talking about your Moors treaties, okay? It's also talking about jurisdiction over the Moors. Alright, now, getting back to the case. In order to talk about Moroccan taxes in the judgment, remember what I said? Where does the ICJ derive its authority? It derived from what? The Charter of the United Nations, right? You can't talk about the ICJ until you've read the Charter of the United Nations, since the ICJ gets its authority from the Charter. So in order for France versus the United States of America to even take place, the ICJ first had to get authority from who? The Charter. There would be no France versus the United States of America case if it wasn't for the Charter. So let's go back and read a reform regarding what? Taxes. Moroccan taxes is another word for what? Economics. We just read in the overview about Moroccan economy. You see how I'm tying these words together? Listen. Now, we go back to the Charter. We go back up, we're gonna go to chapter nine. Okay? Chapter nine is about what? International economic and social cooperation. Don't just skim the title. Read it. Read means what? Comprehend. Forensics. What do you see here? It ain't just economics and social, it's international. What does that mean? That the Charter is recognized as an international obligation. The Charter is an international treaty amongst all states on planet Earth. And all states must recognize the Articles of the Charter. They have one hundred and eleven Articles of the Charter. And then the Charter is supported by what? The ICJ, the International Court of Justice, and its statutes. You got the statutes of the International Court of Justice, right? And its seventy Articles. So when you read the title, it's about international economic and social cooperation. What's the cooperation about? Somebody gotta come together, it's a team. But who's the team? Without the Charter's reforms, the member states, and then working with who? All the indigenous people and anyone seeking self-determination. That way, their self-determination can seek what? Economic and social reforms. We're gonna learn about that. Keep up. Alright. Okay, Brother Joseph, from the top.
Chapter nine, International Economic and Social Cooperation, Article fifty-five. With a view to the creation of conditions of stability and well-being which are necessary for peaceful and friendly relations among nations based on respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, the United Nations shall promote: A, higher standard of living, full employment, and conditions of economic and social progress and development; B, solutions of international economics, social health, and related problems, and international cultural and educational cooperation; and C, universal respect for and observance of human rights and fundamental freedoms for all without distinction as to race, sex, language, or religion. Article fifty-six, all members pledge themselves to take joint and separate action in cooperation with the Organization for the Achievement of the Purpose Set forth in Article fifty-five. Article fifty-seven, one, the various specialized agencies established by intergovernmental agreement and having wide international responsibilities as defined in their basic instruments in economic, social, cultural, educational, health, and related fields shall be brought into relationship with the United Nations in accordance with the provisions of Article sixty-three. Two, such agencies thus brought into relationship with the United Nations are here and after referred to as specialized agencies. Article fifty-eight, the Organization shall make rec- recommendations for the coordination of the policies and activities of the specialized agencies. Article fifty-nine, the Organization shall, where appropriate, initiate negotiations among the states concerned for the creation of any new specialized agencies required for the accomplishment of the purposes set forth in Article fifty-five. Article sixty, responsibility for the discharge of the functions of the Organization set forth in this chapter shall be vested in the General Assembly and under the authority of the General Assembly in the Economic and Social Council, which shall have for this purpose the power set forth in Chapter ten.
Alright, thank you very much. So, what we're talking about in Article fifty-five, okay? Is about what? Creating, creating some conditions. You see that? Creating what conditions? Conditions regarding what? International economics and international social cooperation. So therefore, the United Nations, as the Charter's reforms, is working with who? Is working with the members of the United Nations, there are one hundred and ninety-three members, as well as any non-member states. Because it's a creation of conditions. Conditions for who? All people seeking what? Self-determination, right? Creating a new state. New states always need what? Some help. It's like a startup company. All startup companies need a little bit of help, right? States are no different. You're starting up, you're get, you're gathering your people, and you're starting to put in reforms that starts to create conditions to uplift fallen humanity. And you're gonna need some help. So the Charter obligates the responsibility onto who? The administrative power or the administrative authority, i.e. the colonial power that's overseeing the territory where the people are trying to do what? Emerge as an independent state. And now, the colonial power has to do what? Create conditions to assist, assist the people with what? Their economic and social, uh, uh, affairs through the cooperation between the colonial power, right? But in international law, what's the colonial power called? What's their official title? Administrative authority or administrative power? Because they don't like the word colonist. So you must understand, words matter. That administrative authority or administrative power overseeing a non-trust territory, non-self-governing territory, or a trust territory. Okay, now, check it out. We gotta break down some words, because we're talking about taxes. Moors like to talk about taxes, but you need to understand, how do you derive your authority to collect taxes? And who can assist you with the collections of said taxes? Guess who's supposed to help the Moors collect taxes? The United Nations. They're obligated, okay? Listen. Article fifty-five, right? Y'all hear me say, well, you need to read the Charter, Article one, right? Fifty-five and seventy-three, I talked about this, right? Okay, here we are in Article fifty-five. Where you see the word what? Self-determination. You see? It's a very powerful word in international law. Okay? Now, watch this. Article fifty-five, with a view to the creation of conditions of stability and well-being which are necessary for peaceful and friendly relations among nations. What are nations? Stigots. So they're creating a state, see? Creating a state, like a startup, right? So, gotta maintain peaceful and friendly relations when you're establishing a state based on what? Respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples. So when you see the word self-determination, that's when you, you know, that's code for someone's trying to establish what? A state for their people. They wanna come from what? Under what? Subjugation. They don't wanna be subjugated no more. They want their independence to, to govern, self-govern amongst their own people. So soon you see the word self-determination, immediately, you should start thinking what? Colonialism? Or you start thinking about self-determination, such as some of the European states, such as, let's say, Ukraine. Ukraine was seeking independence, they got the independence around what? Nineteen ninety-six, when they established their modern constitution? Because Ukraine used to be a part of what? The USSR. That modern name for the USSR now is what? Russia. So Ukraine was also using self-determination, but they were not using it on a colonial context. However, Moors are colonized people in the Empire Morocco, so we use self-determination under what context? Colonialism. We're trying to do what? Decolonize. Alright? Listen, from the top. Article fifty-five, a very important article. With a view to the creation of conditions of stability and well-being which are necessary for peaceful and friendly relations among nations. Based upon respect for the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, right? So the United Nations shall promote. You see that word "shall"? That's an order. They're obligated, right? Obligation and responsibility, shall, they shall promote these things. And then after that, it gets into what? Starts talking about what? A, higher standards of living, full employment, and conditions of economic and social progress and development of who? These people seeking what? Self-determination of their people who are trying to establish a nation, because they're trying to create conditions for their startup state. Listen. So when we're talking economics, so it says international economic and social cooperation, right? Didn't it say international? What does international mean? It's international law, but international law is only enforceable by who? States. States enforce international law. So you're talking what? Politics. Who enforce politics? States, i.e. the governments of said state are maintaining political reforms and policies regarding the politics between states and peoples. So if we're talking economics and we're talking social reforms, you're talking politics, because it's the state's responsibility to take care of what? The well-being of the people and the well-being of the state itself. Alright, so no, from the top. Political and economic meaning, okay?
Political and economic meaning can be defined as follows. Political, having to do with who is in charge of the government, who rules a country. Social, having to do with how people in a society relate to each other. Example, as equals, masters versus slaves, superiors dominating inferiors. Economic, having to do with how people make a living. Alternatively, political economic, or political economy is an interdisciplinary branch of the social sciences that focuses on the interrelationships of individuals, governments, and public policy.
Alright. Now, you see how they, they, they tied these words, social, right? Social sci- sciences, right? Social, social science. Do you see that? See how they got the word economic and social into this definition, right? It's tied under one word called what? Politics. So it's political economy. What does political mean? State. It's your political status. What's the political status of your state and the state taking care of the economy and social affairs of the people? But look how Google looks at the word political, when you type in the word political, right? Political, you see what I typed in? Political economic meaning. What's the definition of that? See how I use research? Political economic meaning, what's the definition of that? See how I use research? Because soon as I saw the word international economic, right? Going back. Going back. Soon as I saw international, what does international mean? States. Soon as I saw the word among nations, nations are what? States. And you're dealing with nothing but politics of said states, because political means what? Your political status is about the state. So now that means the state is political and dealing with economics. So it's political economy. We read in the overview, when we opened up France, First United States of America in overview, mentioned what? Moroccan economy, going back to it. Remember now, in the overview, right? Overall view of the case, it mentioned what? Moroccan economy, see? See how I'm tying these words together? We're talking taxes, Moors love to talk about taxes. But first you must understand, taxes fall under what? Economics, because that's how the Moors gonna be able to do what? Create revenues for our state, our, our people. That way the people can maintain their social reforms amongst themselves. You must understand where I'm getting these words from. I study words. I look at the overview, I say Moroccan economy, hmm, that's in the Charter. You go look at the Charter, right? Look at the Charter, now you go look in the what? Chapter what? Four. Talked about what? Economics. Moroccan economy, you see? Go back and read the Charter, this is what Barack Obama was trying to get the Moors to do. So you can maintain your economics and social affairs. But there you gotta catch this word right here, it's an obligation of all the colonial states that's overseeing the Empire Morocco. The United States of America is obligated to what? Cooperation. That's a part of the contract that they signed to cooperate and have friendly relations with the Moors, while the Moors are doing what? Creating new revenues, right? Creating new conditions for the Moors, while they're doing what? At varying stages of advancement. The United States of America is obligated to cooperate through the United Nations Charter, through all the United Nations Committees, right? Because the United Nations has a committee that deals with economic and social affairs. You see? So as the Moors start to rise up, you must understand, where do you derive your authority and where can you go get assistance? And the Charter already said, the United States of America has what? The administrative authority. The administrative power overseeing our territory has an obligation to cooperate with us, and the United States of America has, has to cooperate with who? The Charter members itself, to maintain what? Peace on planet Earth while the Moors are rising up. Because it's all about our what? Moroccan economy. It's a Moroccan economy, not an American economy. The United States of America is geographically located where? In Morocco. Okay, so now, going back to the Charter, let's look up a couple of words. Now we already looked up, um, political economy, right? And it's about who? Let's, let's look at it again. Let's not lose our point. Let's not lose our point, listen. Okay, here we go. Political and economic meaning can be, be defined as follows. One, bulletin point number one, politic. Having to do with who is in charge of the government? Who rules a country? What's another word for country? State. So when you're looking at politics, politics, who's ruling the government? Who's ruling the state? You see the words they're using? Rule. Right? Having to do with who is in charge of the government, who rules? Who rules? Who rules, right? Who rules? This is what Google's pulling up. Well, who rules? On the sovereign authority. Okay, sovereignty means what? There's different levels to sovereignty. You see sovereignty is like what? A hierarchy. It's about seniority. Right? What do I mean? Who has the highest status of seniority? When we're talking jurisdiction, keep in mind the word jurisdiction is synonymous with the word seniority. Sovereignty is like saying the word seniority. Who has the highest status of seniority, i.e. sovereignty? In Morocco, what is the Empire Morocco? The state, right? Who gets to rule then? Listen. The Empire Morocco, right, has the ultimate level of sovereignty, i.e. they're what? They have the highest seniority. They're the senior, seniority, senior. Right? So the Empire Morocco has the highest status in the land, because the land is the Empire Morocco. Who's second? All of what? Our Moor states. That were establishing under Udi Pausa's juris, they're number two in terms of what? Sovereignty, such as Ampac as an example. Ampac has what? Sovereignty over our territory. But we derive, our sovereignty is granted to Ampac by who? The Empire Morocco. So Ampac comes under the umbrella of the Empire Morocco. Ampac is number two, if I'm using an example. The Empire Morocco, Ampac. Who's number three? United States of America. Who's number four? United States. Who's number five as an example? Colorado. Who's number six? All of their what? Counties, right? Cities. Right? And you just keep going down the list, it's called seniority, i.e. sovereignty, who has original jurisdiction? The word jurisdiction is another word for seniority, is sovereignty, seniority. Who has seniority? Let me tell you who does not have seniority. Indians. Indians come under the jurisdiction of the United States of America and the United States. Only Moors, i.e. Moroccans, as a nationality, has the highest status of seniority. Because of our nationality. So why would you choose to be Indian? When you can choose to be Moroccan? If you had a choice, you gonna shoot, choose subjugation versus the nation of the Empire Morocco? Are you serious right now? Listen. I'm taking my time, gotta break this down. Alright, we gotta look at this word self-determination, right? Remember in Class one thirty-four, I started schooling the Moors on the usage of the hyphen. And Moors American got a hyphen in it, which means it's a compound adjective. But an adjective does what? Describes the noun, it comes before the noun. So now, let's look at this word self-determination. Fair enough? Because we see the hyphen, and they say, well, Jay Bay, you said the hyphen creates a compound adjective, isn't that correct? Yes. But first, since it's a compound adjective, how'd the compound adjective start off? It start off in what? Two separate words, right? Two standalone words. Listen. We gotta break this down, Moors, take our time, because the Moors gonna talk about taxes, but we can't talk about taxes until you understand self. Because only Moroccans can collect taxes. So let's understand why they keep talking about self-determination. Your brother Dre, from the top.
Self, noun. A person's essential being that distinguishes them from others, especially considered as the object of introspection or reflective action. Are a, uh, adjective. Of a trimming or cover of the same material and color as the rest of the item. Address with seatbelt.
Okay, so self is a noun, right? So it says, a person's essential being that distinguishes them from others, is distinct. Yourself is distinct. But we're talking international law. In international law, what makes you distinct in international law is your nationality. And your nationality is recognized by who? Your state. So what is truly distinct? It's the state that recognize your nationality. And the state has what? It's a defined territory. It has what? A population. Has what? A government. And the ability to enter relations with other states. Where do you find that verb which I just used? That's in what? The Treaty of Montevideo nineteen thirty-three, Article one. Said, a state is a person in international law. Then it said for basic requirements, four basic requirements with what? Must have a defined territory, right? A population, a government, and the ability to enter relations with other states. Those are the four basic somewhat requirements to be recognized as a state. So, when you're talking self, the self in international law is what? The state. Then the state recognizes its population and the sovereignty and nationality of the people. Under self, it's distinct, this is a very important word right here. It's distinct, right? Distinct, important. Important self, noun, listen, taking my time. Okay, self-determination, isn't that what we're learning? Self-determination, right? But it had a hyphen. But we gotta now look up the words, and then the words created what? They brought together what? A compound word, they created a compound adjective. Okay? Okay, your brother Dre.
Determination, noun. Firmness of purpose, resoluteness. Two, the process of establishing something exactly by calculation or research.
Okay. So determination, listen to me, Moors, it's important. It's a noun. Person, place, or thing, is determining some thing. Firmness of purpose, resoluteness. You kids catch these words? So a determination, it must be firm. It must be resolute. What does that mean? It must be a well-settled principle. Whatever you're determining, it must be well-settled. It must be firm, resolute. What does that mean? Without question, without doubt. There can be no ambiguity. Can't be no vagueness. Can't be no question of doubt. You turn around and call yourself Moors American, is that firm? No, because you can't even find Moors American even in a dictionary. Is Moors American in the treaties? No, so there's nothing firm or resolute. Is Moors American in any type of religious book, such as the Bible, Quran with a Q, Torah? No, only place you find Moors American is at a temple, i.e. a church. So therefore, it does not make it firm, is not recognized universally in international law, the word Moors American. That's not firm. Do you see why the United States and several United States can look in your eyes from their bench and the magistrate says, what you said is a belief, because Moors American is not a word that's firm. And it's not resolution, therefore it lacks what? Purpose. You see? Listen. Number two, the process of establishing something exactly by calculation or research. Say it again, number two, the process of establishing something exactly, that's precise. By calculation or research. Did the Moors do the research on the word Moors American? No, because they didn't even know it wasn't in the dictionary. They didn't know it was a compound adjective. You didn't do the research. So how can you stand on anything that's an adjective and say it's a noun? You lied to the people. Can't be a nationality if it's an adjective. So now that we looked up determination, it's about something firm. Now let's go back to the Charter, because Barack Obama wanted us to read the Charter. And he said, you Moors Americans from Chicago, Illinois, claiming you got the first Moors Science Temple of America, claiming that your temple is in the jurisdiction of America, while America is simultaneously saying their jurisdiction is in Morocco. You said your temple was in America, and United States of America is standing there in Morocco. The foolishness. So Barack Obama said, you Moors need to establish and understand self-determination, so now look, it created a compound adjective, you see? So when you create a compound adjective, it creates what? One word. You take two words, you put a hyphen in the middle, two words, hyphen, now it creates a compound adjective, now it creates just one word. Just an adjective. So we looked them both up, and they were both nouns, but guess what? The hyphen changed the status of the words. Now it's an adjective that describes what? It's describing something now, what? Peoples. Peoples is what? Okay, listen. Let's look up the definition of people. Brother Dre.
People, noun. Human beings in general are considered collectively. Two, the men, women, and children of a particular nation, community, or ethnic group.
Alright, so. People, the noun. So self-determination, compound adjective, is describing a noun. The noun is what? People. But the people, based on the definition, says what? Human beings in general consider collectively coming together as what? A nation, i.e. a state. Listen, then it says number two. The men, women, and children of a particular nation. Of a particular nation, community, or ethnic group, but what's germane here? The men and women and children of a particular nation, and nation means what? State. Right? See this word particular? Where do we see that word at? Barack Obama tried, you tried to tell the Moors to go back and read what? The Charter, right? Barack Obama was the first thing he signed though in twenty-ten. The Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous People. In Article two, we learned the word particular was in Article two. Listen. Rights indigenous people, right? Two thousand and seven. Barack Obama signs it in twenty-ten, they try to get the Moors to go back and read the Charter, because the first thing you learn about as soon as you open it up, uh, your brother Joseph, from here.
Guided by the purpose and principles of the Charter of the United Nations in good faith in the full, excuse me, in the fulfillment of the obligations assumed by states in accordance with the Charter.
So who's assuming the obligation of the rights indigenous people? States, on behalf of the Charter. Therefore, indigenous people also have to assume the responsibilities through what? A state. You see what Barack Obama trying to get you go back and read? That's the first paragraph of the preamble. Then Barack Obama said, go down and read Article one, you Moors. What, what did Article one talk about? Okay. Your brother Dre.
Article one. Indigenous peoples have the right to the full enjoyment as a collective or as individual.
Pause, collective. That's in the definition of people. Remember that word collective he said? Okay, let's go back to peoples. See, collective. Collective is people. People and the word collective, see that? Collective and people, see that? You see what Barack Obama doing, dropping breadcrumbs? Listen, from the top, your brother again.
Article one. Indigenous peoples have the right to the full enjoyment as a collective or as individuals of all human rights and fundamental freedoms as recognized in the Charter of the United Nations, the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, and international law, international human rights law.
Alright, so Article one off the top reaffirms that your rights are guaranteed in the Charter. What type of rights? Human rights under what? Your self-determination. But we were talking about the word particular, right? When we're talking about the word particular, let's go back to definition of people. People about the particular, for the men, women, children of a particular nation. Nation means state, right? But it must be particular, okay? Rights indigenous people, Barack Obama tried to go get the Moors to read it, but they wasn't. Rights indigenous people, Barack H. Obama tried to go get the Moors to read it, but they wouldn't read it. Your brother Joseph.
Article Two. Indigenous peoples and individuals are free and equal to all other peoples and individuals and have the right to be free from any kind of discrimination in the exercise of their rights. In particular, that based on their indigenous origin or identity.
So the word particular is in the rights indigenous people. For who? People. Right? You gotta see what Barack H. Obama trying to get the Moors to do. You need to know your particular origin, your particular identity as who? People. People is a noun. Moorish American is not a noun, that's an adjective. So who are the people, right? Because you can't run around and keep saying, "I'm indigenous." "I'm indigenous." "I'm indigenous." Guess what? Indigenous what? An adjective. Listen. "I'm indigenous." Okay, sounds good. You don't know what it mean. Uh, brother Dre.
Indigenous, adjective. One, originating or occurring naturally in a particular place, native. Two, of people, inhabitant, or existing in a land from the earliest times or from before the arrival of colonists.
Pause. So the rights of indigenous people is about who? People that are indigenous, but people, see how they put it parentheses? You gotta see the code. Of people, parentheses, what are they trying to say? The adjective describes the noun. The noun people, but now it must be a particular what? Nationality. Now you gotta finish the sentence. "I'm indigenous what?" What's the noun? You hear Moors all the time, "Yeah, man, I'm indigenous." You hear people on planet Earth, "Yeah, I'm indigenous." Indigenous what? "Yeah, I'm Indian." Indian is an adjective. You're Indian what? What's the nationality? You see, we gotta, let me just say it. We have to learn the eight parts of speech. Moors getting their feelings. Jay, baby said, "We can't read." Guess what? Moorish Americans didn't mind telling black people, "Yeah, you black people can't read." And soon as I turn around and say, "Moors can't read," they all got their feelings. "Oh, you didn't mind talking down to black people?" Now I turn around as your fellow Moors, say, "You can't read either," and then I start to do what? Qualify it. I say, "You didn't even know Moorish American was an adjective." Because read means to what? Comprehend, you surrender. Right? So you gotta understand, what, okay, what are the eight parts of speech? Let's go back to elementary. Right? The Moors said the Ls are the lawmakers. L-imentary. Elementary is about what? Fundamentals. They go back to school, all of us. I had to go back to school. I didn't know this stuff, I had to learn it. What are the eight parts of speech? It's what? Now, what? Pronoun, right? So you got now, pronoun, right? Verb, what else? So you got adverb, you got what? Adjective, right? Preposition, interjection, and conjunction. Eight parts of speech, now, pronoun. Adverb, adjective, right? Preposition, interjection, and conjunction. Right? Eight parts of speech?
Yep, that's eight.
Yeah. Let me start all over. Now, pronoun, right? Adverb, adjective, right? Preposition, interjection, conjunction, and adverb. Did I say verb already?
Verb and adverb.
Yeah, verb and adverb.
Yeah, that's eight.
Yeah, alright, so let me start all over. Now, pronoun, right? Verb, adverb. Adjective, right? Preposition, conjunction, interjection. Eight parts of speech. So when you know these, these, uh, eight parts of speech, you apply it into a sentence. I noticed elementary what I'm saying, but I gotta say it for the record. We gotta learn these things again. You might not think it's important what I just said, but evidently it is, because if you don't understand eight parts of speech, you don't understand words, and words create sentences. Sentences create paragraphs, paragraphs create contracts, and if you don't know how to read the contract, you're gonna lose. And we've been losing for over a hundred years, because we call ourselves Moorish Americans. Understand what I'm saying? Okay, listen. So indigenous, listen to this part right here. So the adjective indigenous is describing what? The noun people. Look what it said about inhabiting or existing in a land from the earliest times from before the arrival of colonists. Let me pause right there, because I opened up today talking about what? Indians. So you see how they're defining the word indigenous? Indigenous is anybody that was in this landmass before the colonists got here. So you got people running around saying they're Indians. Guess what? The Indians were here before the colonists got here, but when did the colonists get here? Fourteen ninety-two. Look at the date. Fourteen ninety-two, so anybody who was in the landmass prior to fourteen ninety-two automatically was labeled as what? Indigenous. Why? Because by their definition, it says anybody who was in the land before the colonists got here, get to call themselves indigenous. So you got Indians, and no disrespect to the Indians, you just gotta understand based on communication purposes, I'm saying the word Indian. Because Indians are adjective, must describe the noun. So where they're saying Cherokee, whatever, that would be the noun. Listen to my next words. So the Indians was in the land along with the Moors. This is why the United States recognizes in their constitution three legal personalities, even in their constitution. Who are the three legal personalities in the United States Constitution? They mentioned Indians, which is generic words and adjectives. Then it mentioned what? Americans, and then it mentioned what? Subjects. Article Three, Section Two, Clause One, mentioned word subject, and who are the subjects? Moors, because they were Moorish subjects. Three legal personalities was in the land when the constitution was written, the United States of America. But who was here first? Moors. You must understand, a lot of the Indians and for, uh, purposes of communication, I'll say pale-faced Indians, because you got dark-skinned people saying they're Indians as well. For purpose of communication, I would say pale-faced Indians, that's not a, that's not a negative. I'm just using a description, primipatia. So you got pale-faced Indians, you got dark-faced Indians, right? Were all in the land before the colonists got here. The question is, is out of the pale-faced so-called Indians and the dark-faced Indians, because they use this word Indian, out of those two, who has seniority? Well, why does the dark people have seniority? Because even the United States of America is recognizing themselves being where? In Morocco. And the land is made out of the people. So therefore, Moroccans is the nationality that has the highest seniority in the land. The United States of America recognizes the Moroccan government as having sovereignty-dependent jurisdiction over the United States of America. The United States of America recognizes all Indian tribes as being subordinate to the United States of America. You understand what I'm saying? I'm talking jurisdiction, I'm talking sovereignty, which is what? Seniority. So these people who call themselves indigenous, the question is, they're saying indigenous where? Whether Native Americans, listen to my words. Words matter. If you claim to be Native American, you're claiming a jurisdiction called America. The word America didn't come into the lexicon until the year fifteen oh seven, which is what? After the year fourteen ninety-two. So the colonists didn't come here to fourteen ninety-two, and they turn around and named the land America in fifteen oh seven after who? Ameriko Vespucci. So what was the name, uh, of the mapmaker, right? The mapmaker, he was a German, right? What was his name? Martin, right? Wozniawski. Martin Wozniawski. He created the map in fifteen oh seven and called the continent America, he named after Ameriko Vespucci. Fifteen oh seven. Now all of a sudden, the land is being called America. And the people call themselves Native Americans, i.e. indigenous Americans, are claiming to be a part of a jurisdiction that wasn't even created until fifteen oh seven. So those such persons who say that Native American, listen to my words closely. As soon as you tie the word American in anything as a description of yourself, that timeline didn't even start to fifteen oh seven. So yes, the Native Americans, i.e. the pale-faced Indians, are indigenous to America. But America's a jurisdiction while simultaneously, the United States of America is saying they're in the jurisdiction of what? Morocco. And this is why you never hear the Native Americans who claim to be indigenous, they never say that they are in Morocco. They say that they are in where? America. We're talking jurisdiction, I'm talking in layers. I'm talking law. So if you say Native American, or African-American, or Moorish American, you're claiming to be in a jurisdiction of a territory that's an overlay called America that wasn't established till fifteen oh seven. So when Moors run around saying, "I'm indigenous," and you say, "Well, what's the nationality?" American. Because they said it Moorish American, they say that's the nationality. Okay, your timeline started fifteen oh seven after fourteen ninety-two. When the Moors fell in Granada. Right? We're talking Granada now. When the Moors fell in Granada, fourteen ninety-two. Spain, Portugal, all that. Was Andalusia. The Moors did what? They surrendered. Right? They surrendered to the Europeans and signed a treaty over now. And what was the date of that treaty? It was November twenty-fifth, fourteen ninety-one. November twenty-fifth, fourteen ninety-one. That's when the treaty was signed. Thus the reason why they call it Thanksgiving. November twenty-fifth, fourteen ninety-one. And then the Moors, once they signed that treaty, they turned around and surrendered what? The territory over to the Europeans on what? January second, fourteen ninety-two. And this is why Europeans celebrate the holidays between November twenty-fifth to New Year's Eve. They call the holidays, what do they celebrate as a holiday? The surrender of the Moors. Then they came over here to this continent in fourteen ninety-two after Moors surrendered by signing a treaty of Granada on November twenty-fifth, fourteen ninety-one. And this is why the United States and Europeans celebrate New Year's Eve of December thirty-first going into January first. That's the holidays. They're celebrating the fall of the Moors because the eve of when the Moors decided to ride in on their horses and surrendered the territory to the Europeans on January second, fourteen ninety-two. Called the holidays. They're celebrating the surrender of the Moors. Why is that important to note? Because then after that, who came out into the Atlantic Ocean, i.e. upon the seven seas? Christopher Columbus and Ameriko Vespucci. And they come over to the land, and all of a sudden, like, "Oh, it's a new world." Called it America. And you foolish Moors turn around and call yourselves Americans, and you've been Moroccans forever and a day, and even the United States of America says they're in Morocco, and you keep saying you're an American. So even the Native Americans, because you got black people such as Rod Hayes and Dane Callaway saying people are Indians, and the Indians are attached to what? Jurisdiction, America. And anybody assessing anything to America comes under jurisdiction, the United States of America and the United States Federal Corporation, and all their several Union States. I'm talking timelines. This is important for us to understand, because we're talking what? Self-determination right now. Remember that. Article fifty-five of the Charter, because this is what Barack H. Obama wanted y'all to know, but y'all wouldn't take the time to look this stuff up. We're talking Article fifty-five, it's talking about what? Self-determination of peoples. So the pale-faced Indians have proclaimed themselves as being Americans, because they're claiming to come under the protections of the United States of America's courts. African-Americans are coming under protections of the United States of America and their courts. Moorish Americans also come under the protections of the United States of America and their courts. But Moroccans under self-determination as peoples, Moroccan is the nationality that you replace the word people with. That's a noun, but what type of people? Moroccans. Moroccans have civil criminal jurisdiction over the United States of America. According to what? Treaties. According to what? Even the RAS do the common of the International Court of Justice in the case of France versus United States of America, nineteen fifty-two. It was reaffirmed that Moroccan taxes are binding on the Americans. You ever heard of Indians being able to tax Americans? No. But the Moors, i.e. Moroccans, can tax Americans. Why? Because we got seniority. Because of our nationality as being the sovereign independent people of the land. Have you noticed that Native Americans, and I'm not trying to pick on them, I'm just trying to say, black people in droves are trying to become Indians all of a sudden? Leave the damn Indian people alone. Respect Indian people and their tribes and their reservation. Why do I say that? Black people, leave them alone. Moors, leave the Native Americans alone. Why do I say that? You must understand that Native Americans, they are not allowed to tell you that you are Moors. Native Americans ain't ever claimed to be Moors. They ain't trying to steal your identity. They ain't running around saying they're Moroccans. Native Americans ain't claiming that they built all the pyramids. Native Americans don't say they built these limestone capital buildings. Native Americans leave everybody alone. And you black folks, and you Moors, and anybody else keep talking about y'all Indians, all you try to do is identity theft. Leave the Indians alone, because the Indians know that you're Moors, but they're not allowed to tell you you're Moors. If they could tell you you're Moors without getting in trouble, they would tell you dark-skinned people that you're not Indians. You're Moors, and you got the highest seniority of the land. However, the pale-faced Indians don't want to tell the Moors they got the highest seniority, because Native Americans want to keep claiming they're what? Indigenous. They want to hold on to that title all by themselves, and they know that's a lie. Where did the Indian, pale-faced Indians come from? Let's keep it real, they came over what? The Siberian Strait. Right? Mongolians. Mongolians came over to this landmass and started to intermix with who? Moors. This is why you don't hear Native Americans claiming that they built all this stuff. They never say that. They got teepees. How people who built colossal megalithic stone buildings run around in teepees all of a sudden? You see what I'm saying? But they, at the same time, they ain't claiming they built all this either. They tell you something, it was here before they got here. And they ain't falsely claiming it, they're not. Respect the Indians. At the same time, the Indians gotta understand, you ain't indigenous to Morocco. You're indigenous to America, and America is a made-up jurisdiction for Americans to reside in Morocco. We gotta keep it real. So to Rod Hayes and Dane Callaway, leave the Indian people alone. Stop trying to enforce your rights that you think you got to be Indian. Leave them alone. You need to study and find out your behind is actually Moroccans. But you gotta understand what Dane Callaway and Rod Hayes is doing, they're trying to pull that money to themselves, right? They say, "All these Moors been talking that Moor stuff." The Moors got that on lock, so let's talk, let's talk about being Indian. See, they're trying to- The Moors got that on lock, so let's talk, let's talk about being Indian. See, they're trying to lock down the word Indian. They selling books, t-shirts, apparel, CDs. All kind of crap to get you from being a Moor. Saying, "Oh, the Moor stuff ain't working for y'all. Come over here, we Indians." So they can make the money. This is sad what we do to ourselves. Listen, I'm breaking it down. So self-determination is a noun, compound adjective, describing peoples. Peoples is a noun, but now you got to tell the nationality, nationality what? Moroccan. It's the highest what? Nationality in the land, because the land is actually Morocco, because United States of America said they located where? In Morocco. You see? This is too easy. Listen. I ain't done. Let's get back to class one thirty-four. The one-on-one questions. Question thirty-one. What is the modern name for Morbites? Answer: Moroccans. So in order to establish Moroccan economy and collect Moroccan taxes, you got to understand the modern, modern name for Morbites is Moroccan. This is in their own questionnaire that they keep skipping over. Because you must have what? A particular nationality. You must have what? A fixed, affirmed, resolute, well-settled nationality. This is the definition we looked up under self, and then determination, right? And then what? Indigenous. We looked up people. These things must be particular. You can't make stuff up and then turn around and say you got some rights under some fictitious nambigir or misnomer. It's not firm. It's what you call vague. It's ambiguous terminology that has no standing in law when you say you're Moorish-American. There's no standing in law when you say you're Indian and you can't prove it. There's no standing in law when you say you're black, because black is not a nationality. You're black what? You're black what? Sudanese? You're black what? Nigerian? Because black is a description of a complexion, it's not a nationality. So tell me the nationality next time you say somebody's black, they're black what? What's the nationality? This is too easy. So when you're talking modern name, a Morbites is Moroccans. Now we must be particular. Listen. Because the Moors want to collect taxes. That's good, but first, you got to understand self. Because it's self-determination. I'm going back to the ordering. I'm going back to the L-E-L, elementary, right? This is the letter from Ram Emanuel. Proclamation letter. All the Moors know about it. In the first sentence, it talks about what? The ancient Morbites, right? Listen. Ancient Morbites are Moroccans. Not Moorish-Americans, even by your own questionnaire. But listen, because Ram Emanuel is talking what? Cold to you, Moors, but you don't listen. You don't listen. So Ram Emanuel is talking cold, and he's trying to tell the Moors what? What he's trying to tell the Moors? He said what? Your rights. Your rights are guaranteed in the Charter under what? Universal right to self-determination is guaranteed in the Charter. Ram Emanuel wrote this. So therefore, that's the understanding. So now you got to understand, okay. So therefore, watch this. The Morbites, the Morbites, who are Moroccans, right? With now you understand your self-determination, right, is Moroccans. Now you can go and enforce your guaranteed rights in the Charter. So the Morbites, under this right of self-determination, should go and enforce the Charter. You see how Ram Emanuel was writing that? But it's coded. The Moors couldn't see it. Oh, you were so excited to see the word Moorish-American and the word indigenous in the same letter, you just ran off. You never read it. You skimmed it. You didn't use comprehension and forensics. We have to admit this, as Moors, we did not read the document. We skimmed and assumed what the document said. And look what Ram Emanuel told you in this document. I'm not even going to read it. I'm going to just point out the highlights. And what did he say? They're guaranteed in the Charter. What did he preference before he said guaranteed in the Charter? He prefers what Barack Obama signed. What did Barack Obama sign? He signed what? The rights of indigenous people. Ram Emanuel comes out and says, "Yeah, you Moors, your rights indigenous people signed by Barack Obama will point out to you, the Charter gave you guarantees." To do what? Maintain your what? Listen. To maintain the establishment, the creation, the creation, Article fifty-five, creation of your conditions under self-determination of the peoples who are Moroccans. Now you can start collecting taxes. Once you establish the state, you can start establishing what? Economics. Right? And social progress, that's forward. Progress and development, that's forward. Moorish-Americans have been walking around in circles. They've been buffering. And all we had to do is read the Charter. Tie it back in to other United Nations resolutions. All we had to do is go read our own Moroccan treaties. But the Grand Sheiks never read the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty out loud. The Grand Sheiks never read the Act of the Seres of nineteen oh six out loud. They never read the Treaty of Fairs of nineteen twelve out loud. They never read France versus United States of America of nineteen fifty-two out loud. Why is that? You got to go start asking some questions, don't you? So all the Moors want to collect taxes. They want to hear me break it down to how we going to collect taxes. Well, guess what? Soon as you read the Charter, it says self. You got to start with self. So we can't collect taxes till first you understand you're Moroccans. Now, obviously, the new Moroccan states are now doing what? Our new Moroccan states are doing what? We're creating, right? It's a creation of conditions. So the Moroccan states are creating conditions that derive from the authority of the Empire of Morocco. We're putting the government back together again under one nationality called Moroccan. This must be understood. Right? Listen. We're putting the government back together. Empire Morocco is the state, the parent state, the external state that has the highest status of sovereignty, i.e. seniority. And underneath that, the three progressive governments will be reestablished on behalf of who? The Sultan, who will be sitting in the seat. And the Empire Morocco will oversee the three progressive governments, and then will also oversee down here all of the Udi Passe Dadas territories commonly known as the internal Moors. States such as Ampac will fall into this category down here, right? Because we're come under the Empire Morocco's new constitution. Right? The Empire Morocco will have a modern constitution for an ancient land, all right? Now, as I start to wrap up, listen, because we're talking taxes, but we can't talk taxes till you understand self. You don't understand self, then you can't set up your determination. You can't set up the self-determination of the people that are Moroccans. If you keep saying you're Moorish-American, that's not listed under peoples. Moorish-American is listed under adjective. You still ain't made it to the noun status. You see? Listen. What do I have up here? Treaties. List of treaties. List of United States treaties. It's Wikipedia. You go down and look at the list, a bunch of treaties. But we're going to keep it german. I'm going to go down to nineteen oh six, okay? Nineteen oh six. In nineteen oh six, what happened in nineteen oh six? The Act of the Seres of nineteen oh six was signed. Right? They put the Moorish government back into the sovereign position to govern over the Empire Morocco. But the Moors were still naturalized in nineteen oh six because of what? The eighteen eighty Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, paragraph one and two. The Moors hadn't yet returned back to Morocco to sit in the chair of governance. The Moors were still naturalized. Even in nineteen oh six, so even though the treaty was signed, they didn't wake up the Moors and say, "You guys are Moroccans, and you got a right to put together your Moroccan governments again and collect taxes." So what else happened in nineteen oh six regarding the United States? Keep in mind, what if they established the NAACP? Nineteen what? Oh nine. So nineteen oh six, United States of America signs a treaty that puts the Moors, i.e. the Moroccans, back into governance. But three years later, they established the NAACP, so the Moors keep chasing after the status of being colored. So what happened in nineteen oh six? Let's read the title of this. Brother Dre.
Nineteen oh six, Inter-American Convention Establishing the Status of Naturalized Citizens Who Again Take Up Residence in the Country of Their Origin.
Let's read it again, just a moment. Okay?
Nineteen oh six, Inter-American Convention Establishing the Status of Naturalized Citizens Who Again Take Up Residence in the Country of Their Origin.
It's an interesting title, huh? Watch this. Listen, I'm going to click on it. Call it. Okay, so this is called the Bancroft Treaties, okay? Bancroft Treaty, right? He was a specialist in coming up with naturalization language, okay? Now you're going to find some interesting dates here, so pay attention. Brother Dre, from the top.
Bancroft Treaties. The Bancroft Treaties, also called the Bancroft Conventions, were a series of agreements made in the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries between the United States and other countries. They recognized the right of each party's nationals to become naturalized citizens of the other and defined circumstances in which naturalized persons were legally presumed to have abandoned their new citizenship and resumed their old one.
Okay, so I'm going to read it again. The Bancroft Treaties, okay? The Bancroft Treaties, also called the Bancroft Conventions, were a series of agreements made in the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries between the United States and other countries. They recognized the right of each party's nationals to become naturalized citizens of the other. So these states are recognizing each other's nationals as being naturalized citizens, I'll give you an example. If the British nationals come over to the United States of America, and they stay after two or three years, automatically, it was like they had lost their nationality of being British. They automatically became Americans. If Americans had went to Great Britain, stayed over there two or three years and acted like they renounced their citizenship, then all of a sudden, now those Americans became British. If the Moors were still running around saying they're Americans, then those Moors are now being considered what? Americans, and no longer what? Moroccans. Because y'all remember, we're talking jurisdiction. On the name that you're using, the name you're using to identify self-determination says a lot about your status, your political status. So from the top, listen. The Bancroft Treaties, also called the Bancroft Conventions, were a series of agreements made in the late nineteenth and early twentieth centuries between the United States and other countries. They recognized the right of each party's nationals to become naturalized citizens of the other state and defined circumstances in which naturalized persons were legally presumed to have abandoned their new citizenship and resumed their old one. So in the Bancroft, if the Moors, who are now naturalized as Americans, now come back into the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco as Moroccans, now that under this old treaty they was talking about, you abandoned your American citizenship because now you've come back home to Morocco. But if you left Morocco and go back into the jurisdiction of America for two or three years claiming you're American, you just waived your nationality of being Moroccan. Now you're being recognized as American because you're naturalized. So listen. There's a word in here. Y'all going to catch it. Just a moment. I've been telling y'all about for quite some time. Let's talk origin from the top, Brother Dre.
Origin. Name for historian and diplomat George Bancroft, eighteen hundred through eighteen ninety-one, who negotiated the first of these agreements with Prussia. The Bancroft Treaties were mainly intended to prevent individuals from using naturalization as a way to avoid military service and other legal obligations in their native countries. From eighteen sixty-eight to nineteen thirty-seven, the United States entered into twenty-five Bancroft Treaties covering thirty-four countries. A typical Bancroft Treaty had three major provisions. The first specified the terms under which each party would recognize the naturalization of its citizens by the other. Five years uninterrupted residence in the adopted country was a usual requirement. Second, the second provided that naturalized citizens who returned to their native country would, could be prosecuted for crimes that they allegedly committed before they immigrated. The third and most important provided that naturalized citizens who returned to the country of origin and stayed there for two continuous years would be presumed to have resumed their former nationality. That would require them to meet any unfulfilled military service obligation in their native country and deny them the diplomatic protection of their adopted one. Article three of the nineteen oh eight treaty with Portugal was typical.
All right, so what are they talking about here? Now, watch. Look at these dates. Now, they're talking about these treaties, talking about naturalization from eighteen sixty-eight to nineteen thirty-seven. What happened in eighteen sixty-eight? Fourteenth Amendment. What happened in nineteen thirty-seven? Keep in mind, it's from, from eighteen sixty-eight to nineteen thirty-seven. What happened in nineteen thirty-seven? That's when Great Britain relinquished their compensatory rights in Morocco. You see? So Fourteenth Amendment, here, because we're talking naturalization. And then nineteen thirty-seven, Great Britain removed their names from the Moors Treaties. All right? And the Moors were still what? British citizens. All right? So they remained, the Moors remained as British citizens, even though they were actually Moroccans. Their nationality was Moroccan, and now they're naturalized Moors, now being called British citizens. Okay, so these dates are important to understand. But what happened? Listen, Moors. From eighteen sixty-eight to nineteen thirty-seven, the United States entered into twenty-five Bancroft Treaties covering thirty-four foreign countries. A typical Bancroft Treaty had three major provisions. The first, listen. The first specified the terms under which each party would recognize the naturalization of its citizens by the other. So Sultan, the Sultan would recognize Moors as being naturalized by the colonists. So the Moors overnight became what? Americans because of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Automatically, the Moors, depending geographically speaking, all throughout the Empire Morocco overnight became what? Americans, right? British, Irish, right? Became Spaniard, Portuguese, they became French, they became Denmark, they became Netherlands nationality, they became a nationality of citizenship overnight after eighteen eighty, right? July third, eighteen eighty, all the Moors took on the naturalized citizenship of whatever geographical location they were inside of at that time. This must be understood. However, this treaty also said, if the people returned back to their original jurisdiction after so many years, automatically, they were considered what? Back in their original nationality and territory. Back in their original nationality and territory of their old nation, you see? Y'all catch what's happening? Okay, start from the beginning, and listen. From eighteen sixty-eight to nineteen thirty-seven, the United States entered into twenty-five Bancroft Treaties covering thirty-four foreign countries. A typical Bancroft Treaty had three major provisions. The first specified the terms under which each party would recognize the naturalization of its citizens by the other. The Moors that naturalized as being citizens of the United States of America by the Sultan, so they became Americans. All right? Then it says what? There's in parentheses, five years uninterrupted residence in the adopted, in the adopted, in the adopted... I said the Moors were adopted, didn't I? I said the Moors were adopted under the Naturalization Act. The Moors looked at me like I was crazy. But these Bancroft Treaties are recognized Moors as being adopted people that take on the surname of the territory they're in at the time. So Moors went from being Moroccans to being Americans overnight because of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. Let's read it again. Start the work five, the five years uninterrupted residence. So they're putting a timeline. These Moors remain calling themselves Americans. After five years, they automatically gonna be Americans. But what type of Americans? Adopted Americans. If you're adopted, that means that ain't your real nationality. You've been adopted in the family, you're a redhead stepchild. What's the redhead stand for? Red face, see? You the redhead stepchild of the United States of America, and they call you Americans. You've been adopted. Listen, read it again. It says, "Five years uninterrupted residence in the adopted country was the usual requirement." So the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty was signed what? July third, eighteen eighty. Five years later, if the Moors wasn't calling themselves Moroccans and they were going by the name American, they automatically became Americans if the Moors didn't return where? To Morocco, is that what the Treaty of Madrid? Eighteen eighty, Article fifteen says, "Any something of Morocco must return to Morocco..." What, and do what next? "...and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire and consent back to what? Moroccan government." So this, this particular treaty is setting up timeframes. How long did these Moors have to return to Morocco? They got five years from eighteen eighty to eighteen eighty-five to make some choices. You see what's happening behind the scenes? Listen, you gonna learn something else, never fear. All right, here we go. Second. The provided, second, provided that naturalized citizens who returned to their native country could be prosecuted for crimes that they allegedly committed before they immigrated. So if you're trying to escape prosecution, potentially extra territoriality jurisdiction could grab you and still prosecute you 'cause you trying to run away. Because you got naturalized as an American, now you trying to run back to be Moroccan. So the United States say, "Wait, wait, timeout. We might still be able to prosecute you 'cause you was American at the time you committed the crime." Right? Doesn't that sound familiar to Article five of the Treaty of Madrid? I haven't told the Moors a lot about Article five of the Treaty of Madrid, but that's exactly the language of Article five of the Treaty of Madrid. Said, "If you trying to go from being American back to Moroccan, then it might be a gray area where you might have to finish up that criminal case you had going on before you just go back and immigrate and pledge your consent back to your state." But it's a gray area, it's worth a discussion, right? The, the third, the third and most, right? The third and most important provided that naturalized citizens who returned to their country of origin and stayed there for two continuous years would be presumed to have resumed to their former nationality. You see that? Have resumed to their former nationality, right? Resume their former nationality after two years of going back home. You see what's happening? So the Moors who been branded as Americans gotta come back to Morocco. And according back then at this treaty, you gonna find out if it end up terminating, just a spoiler alert, they don't use this as provisions anymore. But I'm just trying to tell you what was happening back in the day. All the Moors had to do was come back home and be home for at least two years and not doing this back and forth stuff between jurisdictions. If you stayed in your jurisdiction as Moroccan, we're talking jurisdiction. We're not talking crossing over the Atlantic Ocean. This is jurisdiction, watch this. That's jurisdiction. I just landed in Morocco because I pledged my allegiance back to Morocco. But if I mess around and go back and say the United States of America, yeah, I wanna, I wanna come back and be American again. Well, you, you going back and forth in jurisdictions, but yet your feet still standing on the same soil. All right, so they was trying to come up with what? Standard operating procedures. Based on what? A timeline. So the Moors gotta come back to their what? Former nationality, which is what? Moroccan, so your self-determination as people, you gotta come back and say you're Moroccan, and as long as you keep saying you're Moors American, guess where you still at? In the jurisdiction of America. You ain't came back home yet. You see? Look how they're talking out loud. This was nineteen oh six. Listen, continue. That would, that would require them to meet an unfulfilled military service obligation in their native country and deny them the diplomatic protection of their adopted one. See that word adopted pop back up again? See, the Moors are all making this stuff up. But I studied. This was nineteen oh six. The same year the Act of the Seres was signed. Act of the Seres was signed what? April seventh, nineteen oh six. Right? This particular treaty came out same year, nineteen oh six, talking about naturalization. So if these Moors decide to return back to Morocco, be a part of Moroccan government, i.e. the Moors government, once they go back to Morocco, they been there at least two years, the United States of America considered, yeah, you officially went back home, but you can't do this back and forth stuff. So why am I talking about this back and forth stuff? Okay, Moors Americans are compound adjective. You got one foot in Moors and another foot in America. You straggling a fix. So guess who gets to make the claim to you? America. Because this hyphen created an adjective. And you still ain't figuring out the noun yet, which is Moroccan. Even though your question thirty-one said you're Moroccan. Imagine that. You got the answer to the test in front of you, but your grand sheiks, they punkin' all their students and telling all their students, "You better not say you're Moroccan. You better keep saying you're American." You better keep saying not only you're American, that you're a citizen of America, and that you gonna keep recognizing the Constitution of America. And they tell you, "Enforce the Constitution of America because you're the true American." You see if the grand sheiks are doing? Even though, even though question thirty-one says you're Moroccan, that's a particular nationality. Now, listen, I ain't done. So all the Moors have been adopted. You've been naturalized, this is what this about, naturalization.
If a Portuguese subject naturalized in America renews his residence in Portugal without intent to return to America, he shall be held to have renounced his naturalization in the United States. Reciprocally, if an American naturalized in Portugal renews his residence in the United States without intent to return to Portugal, he shall be held to have renounced his naturalization in Portugal. The intent not to return may be held to exist when the person naturalized in one country resides more than two years in the other country.
See what's happening? So the Moors have been residing in the jurisdiction of America. And you haven't returned back to your original country, which is jurisdiction of Morocco, and you gotta do it with a pen. And the pen, you do what? What two things you do with your pen when you coming back to a Moroccan state? The first thing I just what? Renounce the citizenship of the United States. You renounce. Then you do what? You pledge allegiance to the Moroccan state, what a pen's called consent. So you must renounce, then pledge allegiance. And that becomes what? The state of facts, that's the properly written instrument that prove that you went through that due process of renunciation of the United States. And then once you're back in your own jurisdiction as Moroccan of a Moroccan state, now they say you got a little bit of time there. You gonna stay over there in that jurisdiction of being Moroccans? Or you gonna go back over here being Americans? You see what's happening? They talking timelines and dates. It's very important to understand what I'm going over right now. Moors never knew about this type of stuff. Let's tell the truth, we didn't know. I didn't know. I had to just do research to find this stuff out. Now I just share it with all the Moors, so you have options, so you know what your options are. That way, you can determine what? Your self-determination as a people, but what type of people? Moroccans, or you gonna be what? Moors American, which is an adjective and not a noun. Now constitutionality, right? Constitution, constitutional infirmity, okay? Brother Dre, from the top.
Constitutional infirmity. Concealed in, yeah, conceived in an era when the right of individuals to change their citizenship was not universally recognized, the Bancroft Treaties represented an important step forward in securing recognition by foreign governments of the right of their nationals to become American citizens. But American constitutional law eventually made the treaties obsolete.
See that? So the United States eventually came out with legislation that struck the Bancroft Treaties. They say, "This ain't working out." So they struck, they struck these treaties, all right? So this language don't exist no more. But let's find a little bit more of what happened, okay? Listen, from the top, Brother Dre.
In Schneider versus Rusk, nine, in three seventy-seven, U.S. one sixty-three, nineteen sixty, in the year nineteen sixty-four, the Supreme Court invalidated a section of the Immigration and Nationality Act of nineteen fifty-two, the McCarran-Walter Act, that would strip naturalized Americans of their citizenship after three years continuous residence in their country of origin. And in Afrim versus Rusk, nineteen sixty-seven, the Supreme Court reviewing part of the Nationality Act of nineteen forty held that Congress has no power to strip anyone of their citizenship, whether it is acquired by birth or by naturalization. These decisions strongly suggested that any future case of involuntary loss of citizenship under one of the Bancroft Treaties probably would not survive a Supreme Court challenge.
See that? So, what? Once the Moroccan, once, once the United States of America came up with laws, it started to strike the provisions of the Bancroft Treaty. Because the United States was trying to say, well, if their citizens go abroad and stay more than three years or five years, the United States was stripping them, or saying they couldn't be citizens no more. Right? Plus, the citizen of the United States was using that as a means to escape what? They didn't wanna go to war, they didn't wanna be a part of the draft. So they would just go abroad. And when abroad, they stayed for so many years, they were so-called saying, "I ain't American citizen no more. You can't make me serve in your military anymore, United States of America." But at the same time, you must understand, this also is about Moors. Moors, because of our Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, it automatically gave the Moors a right to return to Morocco. But then the United States of America was like, well, let's make some other treaty in nineteen oh six to say, uh, once you're in America, you been here for a certain amount of time, you gonna be considered American. Doesn't mean you can't return back home, but if you go back home, you gotta stay home for a period of time. Once you stay home for a period of time, automatically, you certainly have that nationality. You return back to your original former nationality. But what else solidifies that? The properly written instrument that you can give the United States and the several union states to say, "I have renounced the citizenship of the United States and I pledge my allegiance back to my, my original nationality of my state of Morocco." That document in itself makes an immediate separation of jurisdiction, immediately. Because your state of Morocco recognizes you as one of their own. There is no timeframe after that date. Soon as you sign, you immediately are back home. Ain't no two-year, five-year prescription anymore. Keeping in mind, they struck this treaty anyway, so they don't use these as timelines no more. They recognize their people, the people have a right to say whether they wanna renounce their citizenship or not. What's my point here? As long as the Moors stay in the jurisdiction of America, you're American. It's a political status, but that's not your nationality. That's your adopted political status. But you have to come back home and pledge your allegiance to Morocco as being Moroccan, right? Let's continue to read from the top, Brother Dre.
Termination of the Bancroft Treaties. Concluding that the Bancroft Treaties were unenforceable, the administration of President Jimmy Carter, acting in consultation with the Senate Committee on Foreign Relations, gave notice in nineteen eighty terminating the treaties with eighteen of the twenty-one countries with which they were still in force. The exceptions were the treaties with Albania, Bulgaria, and Shosse, uh, Checoslovakia.
Czechoslovakia.
The treaty with Albania was terminated in nineteen ninety-one when Albania and the United States reestablished diplomatic relations at the end of the Cold War. The treaty with the Czech Republic and the Slovak Republic as successor states to the former, I can't say.
Czechoslovakia.
Thank you, was terminated by the United States in nineteen ninety-seven. In the last year of Barack Obama's presidency, the treaty with Bulgaria was terminated.
Okay, so Barack H. Obama knows about how to terminate treaties regarding naturalization. So what makes you think Barack H. Obama don't know that the Moors are naturalized as well? You gotta understand what he's been trying to tell, Moors. You Moors have been naturalized as Americans. You gotta return back to your own nationality and pledge your allegiance back to Moroccan state under your self-determination as people. That way, you can eventually get to a point where you can start to collect Moroccan taxes, 'cause you can't collect taxes, taxes unless you understand your nationality of what? The state, right? And you can't do that as Moors Americans or Indians. I ain't with that, Islam.